Order, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Surely have you had a chance to take roll?
I have taken roll. Everybody is present and you have a form.
We'll start this evening with the consent agenda. Board in front of you will see the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or discussion on the consent agenda this evening? If there are no questions or discussion, can we entertain a motion to pass a consent agenda as presented?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented. Thank you. We'll move on to Mayor's remarks. The first item I want to discuss this evening is the CARES Act funds. As the December 30th deadline is fastly approaching, for the CARES Act funds to be utilized or returned, enclosed is a list of CARES Acts funding that some of our neighboring communities have used here in Clay County. I welcome the board's input on any ideas or necessary expenditures to continue to address the COVID pandemic in the Carney community and do what we can to keep every penny of that local into use. I do know we have a new request from the fire district for some reimbursements that I feel will qualify that we'll see soon. Also, part of the approved expenditure listing for those CARES Act funds are salary for our police department. That's one item I would like to see us consider. I know I'm kind of putting the board on the spot. I don't necessarily, I'm not looking for any specific answers this evening, but I would like the board, like I'm asked, feel free to let myself or Jim know if you have any questions or recommendations on ways we can utilize these funds in our community. Next item I'd like to discuss this evening is a contract with Mr. Bill Shoal. I think everybody in town knows Bill. He's our local fireworks expert and always does a great job at his annual private party. But Bill has volunteered his services to conduct a fireworks display on the evening of December 12th in conjunction with the city's first holiday light parade that's going to be put on by the Carney enrichment council and the Rotary Club of Carney. What not a better way to end the light parade with fireworks? So I'm asking the board to authorize Bill Shoal to be reimbursed for his cost estimated at no more than $7,000 for fireworks and related insurance expenses, which is well below our budgeted item that we had appropriated this year for our annual display of $30,000. Are there any questions from the board? Or Mr. Shoal, do you have anything to add to that?
I think we were waiting to make sure that we had approval on insurance coverage by the city and by the Board of Education because we're contemplating using the elementary school old football field as our source. And I think all of that has been put together. The next step would be to some evening, fire off three or four shells and make sure that we're going to be visible from that location. And other than that, we'll be ready to go.
Yeah, I believe Jim can correct me if I'm misstating here, but Jim, I believe we received the proper okay from the school district to launch from that location. Is that accurate, Jim?
I believe so, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Jim, would a simple motion approval of the board for that expense, is that what you're looking for?
Yes. And Bill, do you think that the $7,000 will cover your insurance costs and your fireworks?
I believe that it will. I'll verify that with the company, but that was a preliminary estimate that they gave me.
Okay. Then yes, a simple motion would be good, I think.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a recommendation that we go into contract with Bill Shoal for the fireworks display on December 12th with a maximum reimbursement of $7,000.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? All right, motion passes. I would personally like to thank Alderman Spencer for the idea. And obviously, this wouldn't be possible without Mr. Shoal and his family volunteering to do this service for the city of Carney. So I thank them both for that. Thank you, board. One other item that didn't make it to the agenda under Mayor's remarks, I do want to talk about this evening. Let me pull it up here on my email, something I thought was definitely worthy to mention this evening. Through Humana, our new insurance provider for the city of Carney, they have several projects and things going on throughout the year. They've got an initiative now called the Go 365 National Step Challenge, is a benefit for Feeding America, the nation's largest domestic hunger relief organization. I'm proud enough that the city of Carney has a team working towards this initiative. We have four employees, Glenda Sykes from the water department, Charles Leach, who's a police officer, David Pavlich, our community development director, and Jim Eldridge, our city administrator, are all working extremely hard on a step challenge to help win this They're looking at 10-plus billion steps as a group, the whole organization, to provide 1 million mills to communities. And the reason I'm bringing this up this evening is our four out of 10,068 Humana members in the challenge, we are in the top 100. I believe they are, what, Jim, is it like 74th place or something?
It fluctuates almost by the minute, but we are in the top 100 right now, 2,400 teams.
So I want to congratulate them for their efforts of not only staying healthy, but to walk those steps to help feed those in need. So I wanted to make sure that I mentioned that this evening as well. And with that, that concludes my mayor's remarks. We'll move to administrator's board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Enclosed in 4A is, the agenda is the bid tab for the 19th Street sidewalk connection from Blue Sky Gardens to Brookhaven, I guess you'd call it. We, the low bid is $69,799. We, at the time, did not know who RFB Construction was, but on your desk, you all have a letter from Lampry Nielsen that is, that makes the recommendation. They have worked with this group and they do have good references and we recommend them as a low bid. It's $58,699 for the connection to Brookhaven. And then there, we want to replace the flashing lights at Stone Crest Drive and 19th with the same kind of strobe pedestrian lights that are at 92 and Porter Ridge. So they'll both be upgraded at the same time with pedestrians' strobe lights that can be activated by the pedestrian when they walk up to the light, which is better than what we have now, which is programmed and it's always programmed wrong, I think, on 19th Street. We budgeted $52,000. It started out to be a small project and we've added to it. But we do have street maintenance funds that can cover the difference if, and we do make a recommendation that we accept the bid and authorize a contract be issued.
Thank you, Jim. Before we put that recommendation to vote by the board, I am privileged to have the Johnson family attended meeting this evening. This idea was brought to me by the Johnson family. Christina Johnson herself had contacted me and we visited several times regarding her concerns for pedestrian safety in this area. Christina, would you like to say anything about the project or why this project's so important to you and your family?
Sure. When we first moved to Carney, shortly after we arrived, we saw there was a bike trail and we were really excited about that. We were very close to the school. We didn't realize that there was no sidewalk that connected. We didn't realize our sidewalk ended. You know, and I had thought about it and talked to other people about it and asked, has anyone ever said anything, you know, to the city about this? And none of the neighbors had, but they were all interested in having a sidewalk. And that was a little bit of a concern, but it was a much bigger concern during times that I would drive down the street and see kids walking on the road. And at first I thought, why don't they just walk in the ditch because it's a lot safer? But then there were a couple of times that I myself walked in the ditch and I can tell you, after a rain, it stays wet for like a week sometimes and it's really mushy and that made total sense why they're walking in the road, but I mean, there's not even a shoulder there. And I didn't know if my voice would be heard. I was nervous. I didn't know what I'd be met with in response, but I thought, you know, there's so many houses back here, there's so many kids that need a safe route to school and so many more people that would choose to walk. I just decided to go, go with it. And I spoke to Randy and I ended up having a meeting with Jim and David. And that meeting went really well. That was a while back. And it's just something that I've continued to try to push for because I think it's very needed. And it would make a lot of people happy and it'll keep a lot of people safe. I'm always worried about somebody getting hit by a car, whether it's my own children or somebody else's. And it's just been something I've been really excited and hoping will happen soon.
Yeah, thank you, Christina, again, for bringing this to our attention and being willing to speak on behalf of the project this evening. I think it's a very worthwhile project. I think it'll definitely save lives, not only the sidewalk itself, but the improved crosswalk and intersection. Any questions or discussion from the board before we consider passing this?
I just have one, Mayor. Looking at this being much lower than everybody else, they did take into account that it's prevailing wage, yes?
Based off?
It is not prevailing wage.
Yeah, based off the project title, this one's not.
Yeah. New statute makes projects under $75,000 not eligible. So we think that the reason that they were able to do this is they are probably the only ones that weren't using prevailing wage.
It's on, Mayor.
Jim, if you could read by title only?
I think just a simple motion is, oh, wait a minute, we have a resolution here?
You don't have a?
We do have a resolution prepared. It's on your table. Resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign a contract with RFB Construction for the 19th Street sidewalk extension project.
Recommend approval if the resolution is read.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Resolution passes. Once again, board, I really appreciate the support. I know all the residents of 300-plus homes in Brookhaven and the area do as well. Jim, do you know, does RFB have any timeline on when they're going to start?
I have not talked to them, so I don't know, but we'll get to work on that and get the word out as quickly as possible, what the timetable will be.
Let them know we are ready, so.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Please continue with your report.
Mr. Mayor, Donnie Smith will address, and I'm going to show some pictures of a damage that's been done to our basin number four, our water treatment plant. And Donnie, if you want to take the, get to the podium and explain maybe what this picture we're looking at, we're looking at a filter.
We're looking at the filter media in the filter basin number four. Jake Davis brought this to my attention Sunday. What happens here when it looks like this is you have some sort of failure in the piping system underneath all your media. You essentially have graduated media from anthracite down to big stones at the bottom. And what we think has happened here is we have a lateral system under there with a big pipe down the middle and smaller pipes coming off that actually back washes this filter media to get all the residue from the lime out of the water. And then it regoes, and basically like a big fish filter, when it goes back down through, it filters all that debris out of there. This is the main pipe and this is the laterals that are off the side from another one that we done in 2013. And what we think is we have a failure in the pipe of the big one down the middle and that's why we have the big, looks like a meteorite hit it in the middle of the filter basin. But this is essentially the bottom of the filter basin, what it looks like with lateral pipes under it. They're concrete pipes and with the chlorine and all that, I think they've just cracked and failed and they need to be replaced. We have a tentative, what do you call it, Jim, guess on a quote, we tried to get for utility services. It's not by any means a hard number.
No.
They told us, just a real rough educated guess would be around $50,000 to replace these pipes. And the filter media has to be all taken out and replaced. And we'll have a firmer number later. We tried to get one today and they just couldn't get it to us.
Utility Service is the company that we contract for our maintenance on our water towers. And they have, they in 2013 replaced the filter media in two basins and did this work in those 2013, those are 2013 pictures. They worked on that and it was a cost of $17,000 just to replace the filter media. They did not repair the pipes. So the pipes, even though they look rough there, they're still serviceable, at least from our judgment at the time we were doing that. So these basins, number four and three and four were added on in 1996. And so they're far newer and we don't, you know, we don't know what kind of material the pipes are, but we'll just have to, we'll have to get down there and see.
But you're thinking it's concrete?
That's what Chris alluded to. Chris is the oldest, he's our chief operator down at the plant and he alluded to most of the time that they are concrete pipes that they put in place.
Well, to where I appreciate the update, Donnie, I assume you'll keep us updated on the final expense and kind of the plan moving forward for adequate repair?
Right. And just so you know, we do have four filters and they can run independently, so we've just taken this one out of service. The water just flows through a little slower. We don't, we can't treat as much water as fast like we, you know, with the four going, but we're still, we're not out of business, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Jim, we have adequate funds in reserves for this repair. I know it wasn't a budgeted expense, but just keep us posted, please.
Yes, sir, we do. And Donnie also would like to report on the West Booster Pump Station briefly.
We're going to do our startup of the 21st, it's Wednesday. Construction is essentially done. Microcom has all their stuff in order. That's kind of what the last piece of the puzzle was. The only thing that I know of left in the construction area is the fence around our new building. I know that's scheduled, but it hasn't been completed yet. But as far as the piping and all the pump station and everything, it's ready to roll. So we're going to fire her up this Wednesday and see how she works. Good luck.
And Donnie, again, I want to congratulate you. That's kind of your first big project you've managed as our utilities director. And like any project, there's been a few bumps, but you've handled the project well. So that'll totally, a long-term difference in the west side of our community. So thank you for that update. Does that conclude your report, Jim?
Yes, sir, does, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
We'll move on to public requests and petitions.
Mr. Mayor, Brian Hamm is on with us tonight. He is managing officer for a liquor license application for the Paisley Candle Company at 400 South Jefferson. His application is enclosed in the agenda packet and has been recommended approval, for approval by myself and Chief Tom Carey.
Any questions, discussion from the board on this request?
I'm happy with this license. I think it will definitely add to Carney.
Brian continues to do a phenomenal job of being a total community partner in Carney with all his businesses. I love what he's done to that corner, continued improvements. So I would recommend that we continue to support Brian and allow his business to be successful as well. There are no other questions from the board? Dr. Hamm, do you have anything to add before we consider your request?
No, I really appreciate the support the city's given me thus far and we just hope that this can continue to bring more people from outside of Carney into Carney and we hope to keep making a great place for the people to live here.
There are no other questions or discussion from the board? Can we entertain a motion to approve the liquor license request for Dr. Brian Hamm and Paisley Candle Company? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Dr. Hamm.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public hearings. I think we have a couple of public hearings to discuss this evening, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider rezoning application and a request to vacate a utility easement from Dusty Barham for his business located at 1-800-NORtheast-128 Street in the southernmost end of Carney. He is not enlarging his business or his building. He is actually building a separate accessory building behind his building. I've got corrected on that. But it's situated on five acres currently. He's enlarging it to 6.6 acres. At their October the 12th meeting, the minutes are enclosed from the PNZ Planning and Zoning Commission made a unanimous motions to, with five to zero votes, to recommend approval of the rezoning request as presented, to recommend approval of the utility easement vacation, and finally, to recommend approval of the final plat of Barham Acres replat. So after a public hearing is held this evening for the rezoning request and alley vacation, it's recommended that the board consider three ordinances, rezoning, vacating, and then the final plat.
Thank you, Jim. At this time, if you wish to speak for or against the application, we'll have you either come forward if you're attending the meeting in public or raise your hand in motion electronically. I'll call the floor open. Seeing no movement in person or in line, I will close the floor for public comment or input. Alderman Barker or staff, do you have anything to discuss regarding the report from staff or Planning and Zoning Commission?
I don't have anything to add.
This is David Pavlich. I would just like to add that it's, we're simply adding about an acre and a half to his existing property. It just happens to take three steps in order to do that, a couple of them are hearings in order to do that.
Any other discussion or questions from the board? If none, if you could read the ordinance by title only, Jim?
An ordinance amending chapter 400 of the municipal code to comprehensive zoning regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately 1.6 acres to RR, rural residential district by Kenny and Annette Barham.
Move to prove the ordinance is written, is read.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Jim, do you need a second reading by title only?
An ordinance amending chapter 400 of the municipal code to comprehensive zoning regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately 1.6 acres to RR, rural residential district by Kenny and Annette Barham.
Make a motion to approve on second read?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Take roll, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor. I'll read the second ordinance, which is vacating the utility easement.
Is due by title only?
Thank you, sir. An ordinance vacating a utility easement along the north side of Lot 1 Barham Acres.
Make a motion to approve as read?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance vacating a utility easement along the north side of Lot 1 Barham Acres.
And make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
Third and final ordinance is the final plat, Mr. Mayor.
By title only, please.
An ordinance approving the final plat of Barham Acres replat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way easements thereon.
Make a motion to approve on first reading?
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board?
Second reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do need a second reading.
An ordinance approving the final plat of Barham Acres replat, a subdivision in Carney, Missouri, and accepting dedication of right-of-way easements thereon.
Make a motion to approve on second reading?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Now let's pull the board. Thank you.
All right. Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
And Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Congratulations, Dusty. Have a good evening, sir. We'll move on to our second public hearing this evening.
Mr. Mayor, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request from Garrett and Jerry Seiler to downzone parcel A from multifamily zoning to single-family zoning for a 12-lot subdivision and rezone approximately 3.5 acres to C1 for possibly three commercial building sites, replacing the previous plan for owner-occupied three-plex buildings totaling 60 dwelling units. At their October the 12th meeting, which the minutes are enclosed, the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended five to zero to approve rezoning request based on the plan submitted and subject to all staff comments. After a public hearing this evening, it is recommended the board consider the enclosed proposed ordinance.
Thank you. At this time, if you wish to speak for or against the applicant's request, we'll have you move forward, state your name and address for record. I'm seeing nobody moving person. Anybody online wish to speak?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a gentleman named Brick online. Mr. Brick, if you could, please unmute and state your name and address. Sir, I need you to unmute.
He's trying to figure that out. Am I unmuted?
Yes, sir.
There you go. The question I had, actually two questions. I was wondering if the tree line along the parcel that's being considered, which is kind of hitting this now, there are three large pines right at 19th Street. Could that tree line as part of the project be improved to be more consistent with the rest of the walking path as you go south from 19th Street? It's partly tree line now and partly not.
So Brick, I just want to make sure I'm understanding your question. Are you asking the city to consider making that a requirement of approval?
I'm not sure that that is appropriate because I don't know how far the easement goes. It may actually be a request for the city if that tree line, you know, by and large is on city property, you know, today or the tree line in general along the path. I don't know how far the easement goes off the path.
Mayor, I'll try and pull up county mapping and see if we can see where that tree line is in relation to the trail.
I wouldn't suggest holding up approval on this. I was just, it would be an opportunity to make that part of a walking path more consistent with the path as it is as you go further south towards the bridge on 33.
Sir, could we please get you to state your name and address for the record?
Sure, sure. It's Dan Pixler, P-I-X-L-E-R, and I'm at 316 Prairie Point in the Meadows at Greenfield here in Carney.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And what is your second question while we're waiting David to look that up?
The second question concerned, there was discussion at the Planning and Zoning. There were questions about where sidewalks were going to be, and I was wondering if there was any further clarification on, you know, where sidewalks would be along Foxtail or on Greenfield.
Staff, do you have any additional comments on that question? Any additional updates from or anything developed since Planning and Zoning?
I can answer. I'll be able to answer that question too, Mayor.
Go for it.
He's looking up that other thing. Answer them both, I guess, if I...
In relation to sidewalks, there will be sidewalks installed along all of the residential lots and along Greenfield Drive as well. On their preliminary plat on the commercial portion, they had a private drive that came off of Greenfield Drive into the property. They'll also construct a sidewalk along that private drive for access to the buildings in the commercial section.
Okay, very good.
And Mayor, I believe I'll try to share my screen and see if we can pull up Clay County aerial mapping and we can see where the trail is in relation to the property line. Can you see this? Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. So here on the right side of the screen is Greenfield Drive. This yellow line represents the property line and you can see the trail. And here are some trees. These darker, the evergreen trees, so those trees along the trail would be within the trail property and off of the Seiler property.
Understand. Mr. Pixler, my... The only thing I would be cautious about, about whether the city or applicant at that point, for that matter, of adding additional trees to that area is the need of if 19th Street itself was ever expanded or additional lanes that would really reduce area and possibly mean we'd have to remove trees. But I'll get with Eric Marshall and Ryan Marcot and our Parks Department and get their thoughts and opinions on possibly adding some trees in the area.
Okay, and I guess the area I was specifically asking about was the trail as it goes south closer to the railroad tracks.
Let me, I'll share the screen again. Hold on a minute.
Okay, so he's talking about this western portion here. Okay, I thought he was meaning the...
Yes, that's the portion I was referring to. Sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Yeah, at least the preliminary plat that I viewed as part of the submittal, it appears that there's some tree buffers between the commercial residential piece, but nothing along backing up the trail is what I'm seeing.
Now, as part of their site plans, Mayor, before they build the commercial buildings, they will go through a site plan process. There will be landscaping required as part of that. That landscaping will be on their own site. It won't be along, specifically along the trail or within the trail easement that we have.
I understand.
Are those three large pines that are there today, are they on the commercial property or are they on the city easement?
City property, along the trail property.
Okay.
So they will stay, I believe.
Okay. So is there any chance more trees may go in along the areas where there are no trees today?
That decision will be made, as Staff mentioned, once we approve final site plans. The preliminary plat currently shows the divider trees between the residential area and the commercial area. But at this time, specific trees, we don't have that information.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for the consideration and it would be great if more could go in there, but I know that's future plan.
Thank you for taking the time to express your concerns and provide your input to the board. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak for or against the project? Ryan, did you have anybody else waiting?
Mr. Mayor, I currently do not have any hands raised.
Okay, if there are nobody else moving, we will close the floor for public comment or input. Staff, do you have anything additional to report or Alderman Barker from Planning and Zoning?
Mr. Mayor, you had brought up today that Dave Marler had submitted some pictures to you that you thought you were going to address, and I have a picture that he shared, if you'd like to see that, on the site distance problem that he pointed out at Greenfield Drive. And he was urging that the sidewalk would possibly be lowered to improve some site distance there. And I would pledge that city staff could work with the Seilers when they develop that commercially to maybe we can work together in some cooperative venture where we can take that section down to improve some site distance there without affecting the rest of the roadway. I don't know that it's possible, but it appears so in this picture that he should send to us today.
Yeah, thanks. I was going to mention my communication. Mr. Marler, I believe, communicated the same concern to the rest of the board as well, but I was, I do think that that's a much-needed improvement in the area. But one that I don't feel is necessarily one that the applicant should have the burden of completing it all on their own. As we know, we have some improvements in the area, part of our interchange project that we are not able to move forward on right now due to funding. But I think when we go through the area and improvement, that that's something we needed to really pay attention to. Mr. Marler does bring up a good concern and something that we should look into and study and address. Board, do you have any, I'm sorry, let's move back to Alderman Barker from Planning and Zoning or Staff?
I think that one concern that we had heard at Planning and Zoning was from a resident from the area that was concerned about traffic. However, this particular plan, I think we believe that is going to produce less traffic than certainly the multifamily. If you're talking about the commercial property, you know, you may have five or six or eight cars at a time there and not the, somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 or 70 cars from a multifamily. So we feel like this is a good use. We also heard from people who felt like we should center all of the commercial property in one area in the city, and I think the planning and zoning realizes doing that forces all of the traffic in one spot. It makes traffic worse, and so we're excited to see this kind of balance kind of spread out across the city so that's pushing everybody into the same two shopping centers, so.
Thank you for that, Alderman Barker. Staff, do you have anything additional to report on this submittal?
I just want to remind the board that this, there was a rezoning considered by the board back in the May meeting by Andy Mackey and Mike Yates as well, and that was to just amend the multifamily plan. This plan would be to rezone mostly to, back to single-family and then some of it to neighborhood commercial zoning, and the multifamily would in effect go away.
Thank you. Board, any questions or discussion?
I would like to say that I think this is an optimum plan. I'm pleased that it is back to residential as opposed to rental, and I'm very happy with what they have come up with. That corner that is the corner of Greenfield Drive and 19th Street, I do drive it. I have also been approached by other people that do not live in the area. They park there frequently for our walking paths because it's the closest parking area. And as you are leaving, whether you're turning left or right there, if you are in a regular car as opposed to an SUV or a pickup truck or a van, the line of sight is a bit hard to see. But I think this is something that when they do get in there and do all of this work, it can be corrected and it'll be good.
Any other input from the board? I would concur with Alderman Spencer. I think this is a great plan for the area. Maybe something we can discuss too internally is some consideration for a speed limit reduction in the area, maybe from 35 to 25. I don't know if that's a long-term solution, but maybe an interim solution that we can discuss as well. If there are no other questions or discussion from the board, we can read by title only?
An ordinance amending chapter 400 of the municipal code to comprehensive zoning regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning approximately 9.83 acres to R1 low-density residential district and C1 neighborhood commercial district as requested by GJM Development.
Can I make a motion to approve?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending chapter 400 of the municipal code to comprehensive zoning regulations of Carney, Missouri, rezoning the approximately 9.83 acres to R1 low-density residential district and C1 neighborhood commercial district as requested by GJM Development.
Move to approve on second reading?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
The vote's unanimous, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Congratulations to the Seiler family, and I appreciate all the residents I see here from Greenfield for taking your time for your input and attending tonight. We have no old business to discuss this evening, so we'll move on to our item of new business.
Mr. Mayor, Garrett Seiler of Greenfield is requesting a temporary building for a sales office enclosed in 8A of the agenda is that request to place a temporary sales building in Greenfield. The board has approved a similar request when Seilers commenced their Villas project, and I think that's either the same building or very similar. City ordinance permits such uses subject to board approval, so a simple motion of the board would permit that. And Mr. Seiler is on if he wants to talk.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, good evening, Garrett.
Hey, how you doing? Yes, this would be a similar mobile office that we put in at the Villas during construction. Because right now, we do not have a sales center in two weeks, and all the inventory that we are currently trying to get out of the ground is already under contract. So it's very urgent to try to set up a mobile office during the time that we're trying to finish a model home or start next spring on our redevelopment of commercial ground. We would definitely put a dentific on it, some stairs, and one time I think we put a handicap stairs up where we need to comply with the code. So we definitely want to make it nice, presentable, put a skirt at the bottom of it. I mean, we worked really hard over the past three years to try to do whatever we can to maintain a good visible view of Greenfield, and we want to continue to do that in the location that we're planning on.
Thanks, Garrett, for that comment. You've done a great job developing Greenfield, you and your father and your partners. And I would ask the board to consider approving this request and allow you to continue to be successful in Greenfield. Any questions or discussion from the board on the request?
Mayor, I just want to make sure I verify where this building is going. Is it going at the stub of entrance to this development?
Yeah, it looks like right there kind of the future location of the street for the single-family residence area Foxtail Drive, kind of the northwest corner of Foxtail and Greenfield Drive, it looks like.
Won't there be, won't they be putting a road there?
Can I speak?
Yes, Garrett. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, this mobile office is, we're just going to put that there in the meantime while we're going through zoning and everything and pushing to get our plats approved and before construction starts. So our goal is to get one of the models, one of our models of either Seiler Construction, Harseide, or NTJ done, but unfortunately, well, I don't want to say unfortunately, but thankfully, we've been able to sell them before we were finishing them. So we would like to continue to have that mobile office with... So we would like to continue to have that mobile office within six, anywhere from six months to 12 months, and then whenever we get the commercial ground built in the building there, we would like to move this over into that.
I'm, but I'm, I guess I'm confused because I feel like that's where you're going to put the road, and wouldn't you want to not have to move it when you're putting the road in?
At that point in time, whenever we have to move the mobile office, well, our plan is to establish a house, a model, not for sale during the time of construction of the roads.
Okay.
Or in the meantime, if we're not having any luck and we can't because the sales are still going good, at that time we might have to readdress a new location to kind of move it off to the side or something. I don't know at that time, at this point in time, I know it's a good, it won't be a problem for the next six months until we start construction.
There are other questions or discussion from the board, if we could just entertain a motion to allow Garrett Seiler approval for the temporary building for the sales office?
Make a motion to approve that, the temporary sales office?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Congratulations, Mr. Seiler.
You guys very much, and we look forward to keep improving the area, we thank you very much.
And we appreciate you guys continuing to invest in Carney, thank you. That concludes new business, we'll move on to Alderman discussion, Alderman Spencer?
Yes, I would like to give a shout-out to the Carney Chamber of Commerce, in particular, their marketing committee. As of this morning, you can go into the Chamber of Commerce office and pick up brand-new maps that have all of the businesses that are a member of the Chamber of Commerce in our city located on here, they are free, I think this is a wonderful, wonderful marketing, tourism, relocation tool for our city, and so a shout-out to the marketing committee that includes John Barber, Jennifer Gruffel, Debbie Holt, Tina Hoover, Stan Knatt, Amanda Lubinski, Brian Watts, the chamber director, Stacy Bratcher, and myself, so I'm very pleased with that. That's all I have.
Yeah, that's, looks like a nice map, I can't wait to see it, a good update. Alderman Holt?
No, I'm doing well, I would like to say, piggyback on that, I do think this is a very nice brochure, so I'm saying good as to the chamber as well.
Alderman Lehman?
Just a couple things, I think the map is great, it's much-needed, and it's good to see it in full color, the other thing I'd like to compliment Donnie on the milling and paving of Porter Ridge, it's much smoother and it doesn't scar my teeth when I drive down the road now, so, and if you please relay that to the Minno Brothers, they did very well at allowing access to all the people in the subdivisions and kept traffic flowing, and it's a very nice road now, so, thank you.
Yeah, if I could piggyback off that, Alderman Lehman, I, Porter Ridge is much, much improved, and Donnie and his crew did a good job, I think managing all of our repairs to our streets this summer, so, thank you for that comment. And Alderman Barker?
Well, in the spirit of public works comments, Ben, I'm going to add my excitement to see that the sidewalk along Nation Road is almost complete, and so hopefully we'll see people using that to walk.
Yeah, good project for sure, thanks board for your input and discussion on Alderman discussion. If we have nothing further to discuss this evening, could we entertain a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Hey, those chiefs had a nice victory and we are adjourned, thank you everybody.